or valued somehow even necessary for making good decisions. However, there's a difference between constructive input and consistency negative opposition. When one board member continuously speaks or votes against progress without offering solutions to create division slows us down and undermines the efforts of everyone else at stake. We cannot afford to spend our time battling each other. Our community expects us to set an example of unity, collaboration, and respect. The fair's success depends on us being able to work together even when we disagree. That means focusing on solutions, not opposites. It's a point that's in once they're made by the majority. Moving forward, I would ask each of us, including myself, to consider this before we move to criticism, let's also bring forward a constructive idea. Let's commit to treating one another with respect and the key is the best decision for our fair and community as a part of our work. Our fair is stronger when we are united. Let's make sure that when people look at this board, they see teamwork, respect, and dedication, not division. Thank you sincerely, Amanda Hart. Um, I think that's pretty well put Amanda, that I think the board is the strongest when we are together. Whether we all don't agree, but I think us moving as a one board is going to keep us strong and show the community that we are together and trying to make the best decisions. Moving forwards with that. So what called this meeting tonight, um, and I'm sorry, all I know that I wasn't at the last meeting and the days got swapped. It threw my schedule off and I had other commitments on that night. So apologize for being not being here on that night. I felt like I wasn't bored at night. Part of the problem kind of messed me up. Sorry about that. So we're here tonight to discuss a fair manager application and interview process discussion. Um. Anybody want to start that off? Any comments, suggestions, thoughts on that? Questions on that? This is strong.
Since, um. This started because of me. And my quest. And since I'm the elephant in the room, I will acknowledge that. Um, and I guess that, um, that letter that you have was because of me. I will acknowledge that also. Um, I believe in things being done correctly at all times. Um, if we are to move forward. Then every T has to be crossed, every I has to be dotted. Um, if we are going to do things. As the old board did it, then there's really no sense in us all being here. If it's going to be outside of the sunshine, then everybody should just get up and leave and just leave the few to do it. But if we are here to do the work and be a new board, then let's, let's be a new board. I've done a lot of work behind the scenes for us to be a new board.
I agree, Nina Strong. I think, uh, it was your recommendation on the midway that we're going with, and I do appreciate that.
I mean, we've, there, there are a, a few of us that have done a whole lot of work. There are some that have done with the horses, the, the pigs, the cows, the, the, all of that. I mean, we're, we're, we're busting our butts to, to make this a new board. Um, but in hiring the fair manager and what happened at that particular meeting. The questions that I asked. I, those were legitimate questions. And because of the answer that I did not get. And the way that it was handled, I made a Florida statute one nineteen request. And that's why we're here today. And because of that request. I got the answers and everybody else got the answers that I was looking for. And everybody can see the answers that I was looking for. We got an email. Everybody got the answers. Um. I don't understand how we got the person.
Do you want, um.
That we.
Do y'all understand what the fair manager application score, what this was?
Uh, I was a hiring manager.
Okay, so let me ask you this then, and I've said it already. What, what process don't you understand?
I looked at the.
Well, I'm, I'm forward on that. Oh, okay, let me keep this.
Totality of everything.
On this application score. We took every single applicant. And we scored them. One to a hundred. It was the executive board that. Fair board voted to handle this. Scott Corner Day as the city manager and Amanda as the assistant setting everything up. And we scored all the applicants. And we took the top six candidates that we felt scored the best. And then we started the interview process. So these scores here only reflect how they look on a piece of paper with an application and their resume. And that's how we scored these people. This had nothing to do when we brought them in for an interview. Once we conduct an interview, that's when we start arranging out the candidates and how we reach our decision. So lovely, like I said, I just want to explain this score sheet. This score sheet has nothing to do with who we select.
Strictly from their resume, right?
Strictly by pieces of paper.
Right.
I don't know who these people were, what they looked like, or anything, but it was strictly off of pieces of paper and a resume.
Which is quite different from sitting there talking.
Absolutely. I could draw you up a piece of paper and a resume that makes you think I am all great. So until you sit there in front of me and look at these and talk to me and I'll give you answers. Straight face to face, it's a very different sitting. Yes, ma'am. So any questions on this application score sheet? I know it hit the word of mouth and it's went all over the county, taking us like we didn't do what we're supposed to. But if it's a power, we can handle this application score sheet. Yes, ma'am.
So how did someone sitting before you, how did they, the question that you asked? How did that differ from the application? How could they tell you something different than what they actually was on, on the paper? And what was scoring system for the interview?
We didn't have a scoring system for the interview. We had, we gave the same ten fifteen questions to every applicant. So we didn't deviate the questions from applicant to applicant. It was the same questions throughout all interviews, interviewees.
And I understand that, but I guess what I'm asking is, so you're saying after the first upset in front of you, you got a different view? Is that what you're saying?
You get a different answer.
Get a different answer, so. The different answers.
Let me ask you this, let me put it this way. If I ask you what color is the sky? Mr. Boyd might say it's blue. Mr. Reese might say it's gray. Amanda might say it's a light blue, which is the correct answer. You know, so then you have to distinguish what you feel like is the best answer for what you're looking for.
So then why do these score sheets, the interview sheets, why, why score them? If, if, if they were not important.
Because they're heavily appraised. Twenty-six applicants. I have full time job, everybody in this room, I didn't have full time job. I did not have time to sit here and interview twenty-six. So we narrowed it down to our best, what we felt like was the best six. And we come up with a score sheet. First one scored one five.
How we were gonna do that?
Right, and we voted on that.
We voted on that. That's how we picked, we were gonna do it, we all voted on it.
Majority for her. So I'm not sure why we're here.
Because I'm here and I'm glad you called in, because I don't understand, oh, a seventy? A person with the lowest score and someone with an eighty-seven, how did you could interview that person with seventeen more score? And that person with seventy outrank that person?
Well, you could get on the computer and do an application and make anybody want to hire you. And so you sit down and actually talk to the person, ask them questions and fill them out and see if this position really good for you.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, that's how they score them though, because I was confused.
Prime example, I've got a promotion example going on right now. The initial one is all the people that's wanting to take, get a promotion, they gotta score at least a seventy or higher before they can go forward into the process. And then it's further into the process where you figure out if you're qualified in this area or you're not qualified in this area or so on, so. Then that's where you start making decisions. Now, initially what you're thinking of score seventy. You could have twenty people, but you're gonna take the top, say, six people that score seventy or higher, then you have them to continue on through the process. And that's when you start.
Mr. Alvarado, you got a question? So I do. First of all, I'm Joanna, thank you. See my name? Happens because I was interested in what I thought was actually the position. So. Hard for me to be here because I'm dating on the, um, state. I'm extremely passionate. I'll make the community stronger, better. I've worked with employers for over thirty years. First, I want to thank you all as the years for having a difficult decision. I want to thank the board members for asking me difficult questions. It's all in the place we don't want to be in because of prior and we all want to be doing the right thing for, if we all wouldn't be here. I think for me. It's a young board, June, July, that we're within. I think there's some things that we can learn as a whole, how we can do things more efficiently, maybe more transparency. And I think that's a valid point coming from this discussion. As an, as a, for the help employers, you can have a rating sheet for the application. But when somebody asks if number one doesn't want the job, and how are you going to go to number two, and how are you going to go to number three? And that was kind of part of the conversation that was at the last meeting. There wasn't a clear path maybe of what number two or number three was. So I'd always suggest to you that maybe as a committee, that, and not just people but also county, you know, the interviewers involved in the interviews. To make a rating sheet for after the interviews, even if it's an A B C scale, you know, something so that you can justify if number one. Um, doesn't meet contract negotiations, are you going to repost the job or are you going to go to number two? It goes back to the bylaws and it all goes back to the rules and all that information. So I'm just, I'm passionate about being here. I think we all are passionate about being here. I just want to, um, to give you my support of the selection that you did make, the presentation of the kind of commitment of fundraising. And community leadership and information I'm excited for. I can't wait to hope support. But I just do think that there are some professional actions that I maybe can help the committee. Um, just because of what we do with workforce boards and with boards in general, to make sure that if there are difficult questions, there aren't. Relaxed answers, but maybe formal answers so that that way it can be documented. Because if it's the same question from a board member, it's going to be the same question from the community. And ultimately, when we all walk out of the room, we're all one board. And so we need elevator speeches or communication. So even in here, we can argue to disagree, but when we walk out, we need to be saying the same community, um, message. And so I want to help continue to support the board. Like, I want to thank you guys, thank you a lot of your time and effort. I'll thank you for being on the board. That, because it takes a lot of time and effort and I hope that this one action doesn't take away from what we're doing. I also want to remind everybody, we said we give you six months. And so if six months is coming up in December, and if we need to have a discussion as to whether or not we needed to do what we need to do within the first six months, there will be a vote to, to make some changes. So at this point, I just wanted to add my support to both sides and say that I agree that transparency would help, that that rating sheet is disservice to the people that you might have interviewed for. Because I can see by what you produced, all of the information was, that was pre-interview rather than post. And I think for me, when the conversation was what's second and third and what's fourth and are you going to repost or you go to the other person? That's probably the professional part that might be missing to answer a, a question easily.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take ownership of that.
And not just.
No, 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 you, you hear me out. Because I am compassionate, I think about people's feelings. And it was brought up to me about second, third, fourth. And I said, I don't want to stand here in front of the room, there's two applicants in here. And I didn't want to say you're ranked third, fourth, or you're ranked second. I was looking out for the compassion of other people's feelings that is on this board. That's why I did not really want them to produce first, second, third, fourth to you. Cause of the applicants that were in here. So I'm like, I'll take ownership for that. And I agree with you. We are a young board. I think we all got hurt going into something that. Maybe we weren't totally all prepared. Personally, I don't think the county was prepared for ever getting us going on down there at the fairgrounds when it comes to putting on a fair, you know? Um, so I think there's a lot of learning processes for everybody. I think we're a smart board. I think we're all a smart group of people. And I think we do have opportunities to learn. It's going to take us time. We always want to talk about the Clay counties, the Baker counties, the law, how long's on fair, fair been in, in business? They've had a lot of years on us. So.
I think it all comes, and I just want to say, I think it all comes from good intentions. We all want a fair march. We all want all the animal shows. We want the animal, the horse arena thing. But we also need to have good roots. And unfortunately, it's like the tree is big, but we need to grow the roots. We need to be transparent. We need to have an agenda. We need to have schedules. We need to have information that's public to the, to everybody on the website, not about events and joyful, but about like meetings and stuff, so.
And I think I'll give a kudos to the force committee and the fair committee. Y'all have done it excellent. I mean. Y'all went above and beyond my expectations on the fair committee of what y'all were doing. Kate Van Duzen, just Teresa Holden, or, and yourself, this strong on, on this board of ideas y'all were coming up with, you know? Kudos to all that.
We gotta focus on the business in this room.
And trans, and transparency, but there was no second, third, or fourth.
And that would have been an answer.
It, it was unanimous for the number one candidate. So we decided that we would move forward with the number one candidate and if this board voted the number one candidate that down, then we'd go back to the drawing board. And we, we evaluate the interviews and then go from second, third, and fourth. But it was unanimous decision, so there was no need in hashing through the weeds. You know what I mean? And really, we didn't feel like there was need in breaking down who scored out at what. It was unanimous of a number one candidate and that's why we chose to go the direction we did. That's what we were asked to do and that's what we thought we were doing.
And, and, and I understand what you're saying and all of that, but still, you didn't have the privilege. I know we voted to, to take you off for the transparency still. Still have questions because I looked at the, the candidate paper. This girl graduated from high school, but I, I don't want to refer to her. I'm just saying. We had one candidate that graduated from school in twenty twenty-one, has had three jobs and this is just twenty twenty-five. So how can you sit there and say that she was the best of people that have thirty, twenty-five year experience on a job?
I've had two jobs in my life. I'm an assistant for utilities over the university floor.
Okay.
Am I qualified to do that for this?
Nope.
This, this, I only had two jobs?
No, no, no. I said this person in the last four years has, has had three jobs.
And every one of them's been upgraded.
And so maybe, I'm trying to help translate, so I apologize. But maybe what, what the question is, is the things you did see in the interview, what of that person to the highest? What were the things? And so when I looked at the paperwork, this is just my, when I looked at it, I read everybody's chicken scratch, as I read. Um, it was like, I could see the fundraising was a huge part. I could see the community involved. And maybe for this board and for the interviewers, that was times twenty. So if you were at ten, you're times twenty and that would have been rather than you have thirty year experience as a manager. Or something. I don't know. I'm not going to speak for you all, but I think not understanding what, we weren't in the room for all the interviews. And so we don't understand what your excitement was for that interview, for the interview, other than you guys please vote for her. She's really great. And so I think maybe if we could have got some, and I, more of what really matched that interview with the needs of the board. And, and so maybe that, you know.
I think her presentation along kind of showed that she's.
Hold on, before you talk, did I take away from anything you said? You didn't take away from anything when I said, and that's the fact of, that's the fact of the right. You all bought her in here and say, this is who we picked. I think that you should have come and said that we picked this person at a discussion, not to just bring her here to us that night.
And gave her five minutes.
And they gave her five minutes, the whole unit, five minutes. I think you should have bought her that all the information to us, say, this is our candidate, this is why we picked her, blah, 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 and gave us a chance.
And that defensive, what question?
You did.
I think he was just, he told you why he said what. He was just trying to protect the people that were in the room that had applied. He didn't, he told y'all, you could come to him and he would show you the application.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm, I, I hear what you're saying, but that's not what I'm asking. I'm saying the night that she was bought, she shouldn't have been bought into the meeting that night.
But that's what we voted, we voted for them to do that. For them to pick the person and bring her. We did vote prior to that for her, for them to do that.
You are absolutely right. You, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
I mean, I'm not, I, I couldn't.
What I'm saying is that after you picked the person. You should have bought that back to us, not bring her to the meeting the night that you say, da-da, that's what I'm saying.
I think the, and I'm not meaning this many disrespect or any misunderstanding yet, but the point of them bringing her was so you could see who she was as a person. You could see how her, her personality was, how well she would fit into the position so she could present herself and try to sell herself like she did. Which I think she did a phenomenal job at. I've had to go do many interviews and I can confidently say, I love the job I have. I am surprised I have the job I have and I'm very blessed to have it because with how she did hers, it put mine to shame. And I, the whole point of them bringing her here was so we could see her, so we could see her experience and, sorry, I lost it. Um, and then she was asked to leave the room, but after we had our five minutes of, she was asked to leave the room, which was when we all were able to have that discussion on whether or not. We thought she was a worthy candidate, that we would want to go.
Again, I say, there was nothing wrong with bringing her, but she should have been bought in after we, they brought to us and say, we don't know these candidates and these other candidates, da-da-da-da-da, and this is who we picked. We want to bring her to you all and let you all see who she is, but that's a frame her in here and saying this is who we picked. That's what I'm saying.
And I think maybe, I think maybe, sorry. Uh, agenda number one should have been what you have now, which is the application and interview process. Hey guys, we interviewed, we got six, we got sixty-four, I'm making up numbers, nobody record that this is the right number. But I got sixty-four applications. We, we scored them. We interviewed seventeen of those seventeen. We asked fifteen questions of those. We narrowed it down. And this is the candidate that we think is the one and the reason why are point A, point B, point C. And therefore, we asked her to come to introduce herself to you. And maybe that would have been easier, rather than agenda one is, there's a person standing up here with a slideshow. That is just kind of, and I think the conversation about who was number two, who was number three, what was the process? Was mid-vote or even an after vote, rather than before presentation? Like, that's just my, I'm, I'm just trying to help maneuver between communications. That's what I do.
Or Brad had said to me, had stepped to me and said, two candidates are in this room. That's why I'm not going to tell you. He got pissed.
I'm not getting pissed about it. It's short to the point that whether you respect of the other candidate.
I took it as being defensive.
Well, I apologize if you took it that way, who's wrong.
That's why I said what I said.
But exactly what I said is plastered all in the newspaper this week. So we can go down there and get the telegraph and pull out exactly what I said.
He didn't put exactly what I said in there. He put in that I said about playing in my face, but he didn't put in there that I said. That I was offended and if I'm a D E I or if I'm a token and if I'm a.
Pretty face.
If I'm a pretty face. I said I was a pretty face several times and I know I'm a pretty face.
I'd like to make a motion with all the, because I have a reason.
Is, is there anything we need to vote on the process?
Very, very good question. What do you guys think, Storm control?
I ain't waiting.
Well, I, uh. Feel like I need to respond since I was called out in the tongue for after being one of the ones who voted against Ms. Hutchinson. I asked her a question and I intend that once she takes her position, if that's what happens. That I would go to her and I want to tell her exactly what I'm telling everybody here tonight. The number one thing that I get asked as I travel around the community. Is there's nobody in Bradford County that can leave anything y'all are doing? The people in charge are from another county. People qualified here, we go to another county. They have no skin in the game. Secondly, I asked the lady. In the years that you've been with the Ronald McDonald House, what have you instigated and what have you started? Nothing. She does not live in Bradford County. But the thing that really got me as trying to be a profess Christian was in her presentation. And, and in front of everybody. One of her bragging points and acknowledgement was the fact that she was living with her boyfriend. I do not see that as a characteristic of somebody that's going to be leading and developing the youth of our county. She does not live here. She had no intentions of living here.
You're wrong on that.
Sorry.
You're wrong on that. She does have intentions to move.
There's no intentions other than if she decides not to. Because I asked the other night in the board. The point made there is no requirement she has to be within one hour of the fairground. That was what I was told. She doesn't have to move. If she wants to move, she can move. And in a correction to what you stood and told just a few months ago. Clay County Fair is much younger than the Bradford County Fair. They came when I was a former member of the fair association in their early ages. Clay County came and asked for our rules and our bylaws to get their fair started. We are not a younger fair.
No, sir. What I said was, this board is a younger board than what Clay County's been established at.
No, you, no.
I don't think I've been the chairman of the board for more than a few months. So I think I was pretty much younger than Clay County.
You said the other fairs, the other.
I don't think there's a fair in the state of Florida that's been younger than thirty months me being in this position, Mr. Alvarez. I don't think none of us have been in these positions longer than any fair in the state of Florida. That's what I said.
Well, if you did, I thought that'd have been a commission of a good.
Is there anything we need to vote on number two with this information?
I have a motion on tape. I'm looking for a sec. Can you move on to that?
One, 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 one. Do you got a question?
Oh, 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 yeah. I went, I went at the last meeting, so I.
All right, I'm sorry. She's, she's.
And you've got a motion?
I have one question.
I have a question. So are we saying that you feel that what you said had. So are we saying that you feel that what you said had solidified what I was feeling? Are you saying that that, you know, that's it, by moving on?
Mr. Paul Van Bushman moved on, that, you know, we prevented the candidate at the last meeting, we're telling you for a process, we're discussing the process that we voted to approve, we voted to approve at the last meeting.
We did, without any information.
We voted.
That's not true.
Like, we didn't have the information, but we didn't, we didn't have.
I didn't have any.
Okay, well, we didn't have the score sheet, we didn't know how this is going, so.
Doesn't mean what you saw, I saw.
We didn't, we not have.
It doesn't matter if we voted to.
We voted to.
Maybe make the station and bring the whole board for five minutes.
Is that happening after our meeting, did the county approve it? Because the county approved it, so we didn't, we were doing a different county.
Correct. And they negotiated a contract with the county.
So then the answer is yes, there isn't anything else to do to make that separate.
So the county has.
County for the. For the, the, we. I asked the county today to go ahead and set up a meeting, an information meeting for all of us, it'd probably be mandatory, but it's going to involve sunshine law, uh, board governance, and Robertson's board. And I hope the county will buy us lunch, will all attend, and hopefully will learn something from this. And one of my statements from months has been, I've been wanting to be the fair manager, getting to be a part of that as well, so we're all learning the same stuff in the area. So. All in favor of the vote, that Mr. Shaw made to move forward without number two? Any others? I, I don't know if this is to get sunshine law, Robertson's law, or the rest of Sucey's laws or anything else, but I'd be more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one, or with the executive board, and spend a little bit more time with, with what our feelings were.
Yeah, because right now I'm feeling some kind of way.
To satisfy you, you're, you're saying that's a gift.
I'm not saying it's, no, no authority is going to cover the rest.
It's not, there is. I just want, want to go and register that I am feeling some kind of way about this situation. And that's, and that's my right.
Uh, going on to number three, fair manager contract. Um, that was all put out in the agenda, there was copies around here, Amanda?
Yeah, somebody won't tour and I have one that.
You got some more, Katie, too? I think there's a few. We're going to take them a couple, I'll, I'll make the cuts. What, you want to talk? You got a next? Yes.
The, the, each figure passing out now, the contract between the county and the person, is that contract something that we can have? Is this just a informational information? I mean, it's not input that we have.
The contract was a new minute. In the, the week of.
We have some more copy?
I would have seen.
Is the contract something that we can have, is this just a informational information? I mean, it's not input that we have.
The contract was a new minute. In the, the week of.
We have some more copy?
Saying. Yeah, I know we did this.
We have some more copy? Coming out, we're going to have, it may have the highest percentage of information, you know?
Not if it's eighty-two percent, um, out of you.
The price range, it was a seventy-five with eighty-five, a thousand dollar price range.
He could finish that. That current, he has to sit down with her and she's angry.
That's, that's what we negotiated on, was that eighty-two thousand, he's accepted that.
In the terms of the contract? Is that a sign?
Yeah.
Who, who negotiated this?
The county commissioner and Scott would have been the one that had to get the contract over, and then we'd have looked it over.
Which one?
And then Bernie, Brad.
I mean, uh, we're probably going to.
He, he draw it up.
Everything settled about that. I will be, you know? And the woman, hold on, everything, she might sell.
Sergeant?
All in favor? Any votes?
I'm going to abstain.
Probably a few seconds. He just pumped through my ears and his back, though.
All right, with that being said, um, who is meeting the term? I called her, sorry.
No, I didn't know. Yeah, somebody asked this.
All in favor?
No, I mean.
No, I'm sorry, all in favor of the adjournment?
No, no, that, Amanda, you, you, you said, you don't, you didn't hear the names. But you said you didn't hear a name, it was a.
You have to do a roll.
You know, they do a roll call, and they have to say yay, nay, or say.
I was going to go. Yay or nay?
I'm a gay. I'm a gay.
Yay?
Yeah.
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 Brian? Yeah. Just Lisa?
Give me a minute, my slow reader, come back in a minute.
Boy? Yes, boy? Three, uh, uh? Two, yeah.
You have your answers, now we got to do the adjournment.
Do your adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn. I'll send it.
Yeah.
We just.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. That's, yeah.
Yes.
Not a juvenile, um, history. It's based on.
He is, he is.
He worked for the church.
Right, what this was, but literally, I called, I was just.
That's your girl, right?
It's three, it's two years.
It's something you know. It's a, it's a, it's a, a green. Yeah, they would make like a different, not like thirty, but yeah, different, it's not, yeah. Yeah, well, I think, I have thought some different stuff, I think they might, well, and that, well, I'm super good on that.
I think you have a problem with that.
It's not yet, I would get over it. Yeah, it's not, maybe, you know, get some, I'll, it's a way, it's a, it's a. Because it was there for like a month. It was, yeah. Did, you know? He looks like he's, he's.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Kind of how he died.
Okay, okay, yeah, I understand that.
We need something. Sir. Yeah, that's, that's.
He is so mad, he said.
I, I don't want to turn, but I think we all, we have to look in there. No, I, I just saw on the phone, like, I have to, I have to pay that something. That's what I mean, I have. What did you ask for here?
He's only trying to, he's trying to.
Not very hard, very, very. It's pretty.
Right, he's going to. Yeah, I'm going to. Yeah, I'll be doing the baby.